Hold on a second. Let me, let me come up with a proposal.
No, there's not definitely, and there's not a page that says Grand.
Oh, my.
Okay.
Does that check?
I sure am. Look at you.
Oh, yay, congrats.
Wait, where is the chair already?
That's what you're doing, Daniel. That's what I'm gonna do, right? You go back.
Are you gonna have these done for water and wastewater? So yeah. The pendulum set down really is like, that's, that's good news. Mine is that's.
Yes.
No. He was expecting it all.
Wow. Beautiful.
So he couldn't answer any of your questions.
He brushed it, didn't he?
No, we were.
Welcome.
Five minutes to see the camera.
Thank you.
One thousand dollars worth of star. Not like. I went for the season. And you got first mention. What, I got part of it.
You know, I could've dated more like ten jobs in other places.
Oh, Christine, I wanna help you.
Oh.
Take that pot and leave something else there that'll just don't load up.
Healing pot in the Meniala parking lot.
Healing pot.
Already.
And, and comes up here for her famous too.
I'm worried how they come out and back over.
I took out, um, I took out mine, I took out the mailbox. Luckily with the old mailbox.
Oh, does his now it's.
The story, the other mailbox didn't have bearings, but.
Well, I thought about that too, the park next to the.
Oh, yeah. Cause new equipment.
She would be either rolling over that pot or taking out the mailbox.
Stay.
It's like you.
Oh, it's not painted.
It's very soft. So.
I saw. Exactly. You're over there.
That's the. That's why I'm moving. Future of ours working more. I had that too.
That's great. Yeah, like can we talk, help each other. Sorry to get in the. I, I remember, I don't, I don't get much of a message on this. I feel like I wouldn't have helped you other words. I'm a baby, but I believe in all these consequences. So I didn't need, I got nothing. Oh, I remember. Right? Yeah, yeah.
He remembered I did, and I'm like, no, I think that was from the workshop last week.
I think it was the meeting before that, he said that he wasn't gonna be here Tuesday for he'd be there for the workshop. Okay, good. Sounds good. Thank you. Put up, put up. So what are you doing, new irrigation?
Me?
Yeah. Just fixing.
It's original irrigation, but.
Yeah, I need to do the same thing, but I'm. I don't even wanna.
Come in, pull down, that's all. Honestly, just fix it, cause the kids roll up on it.
Yeah.
Cause you have, you have a curve curve, we have.
Mm-hmm.
Roll up, so.
Oh.
It's in a big F three fifty and she just.
No, I have a c- I have a, a roll up too.
Yeah.
Cause my daughter always rolls up on it.
Kids. Kids, uh, because of a big F three fifty, so big, grew up in projects and.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And I just had to fix it, and then it's been over the years, I've kind of patched it, so it was against the curve. And now it's like, they did just some curve, they're going broke, it's like, and we just dig it all up and fix it, right, the first time.
Oh, good. Yeah. Yeah, that's crazy though.
And so this is a project, fix it, right? You know, all the stuff, I have all the landscaping stuff at home, but still could up to the, we could up to.
Yeah, oh, Home Depot, yeah.
That special they use.
Mm-hmm. The one that you missed, the one that you forgot to get.
The one that we know of that, oh, no, each week's one, each month's one, and then I would make a strip, or like, when it was about like three hundred dollars, like three hours.
And then when you test them out, you're gonna.
It was a little out of place, but.
Directional.
Do you have a, I don't really.
I'm willing to adapt, I'm a human being.
But we did, um, yes, when things adapt.
That was business.
So now, you can just mainly.
I see, I see, since the Sanders wants to strike down real estate taxes. What would that leave us? No phasing taxes, and in other words, you buy a house, you can, it's pretty easy. Slight percentage more. You can't do that. Can't understand.
He's a conservative Republican, he can't be stupid. Cities will, as the counties will probably lose it, and the school board will continue to be on the back.
Call order, Meniala City Council, if Laura, rise for a moment of silence, and Vice Mayor Field lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which is its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Funders was dialed in today on that.
Yep, mhm.
That's my bass voice.
That was it, I was like, man.
I studied voice for five years.
Agenda review.
We can, uh, request to council consider tabling item five until the next meeting.
Sounds good. We want to table five. Um.
Need a motion? No, I'm good.
Anything?
Don't.
Scott, Mark.
Christine.
Changes.
Okay, can I get a motion to table item five till the next meeting, please?
I'll make a motion to table item five.
Yeah, get a motion, get a second.
I'll second.
First and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Can I get a motion to excuse Mr. Hernandez, please?
I'll make a motion to excuse Mr. Hernandez.
Got a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Get a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Public comment, if there's anybody in the audience who wants to speak on anything that's not on the agenda, please come forth at this time.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the record, Wally Swarkle, eight oh two South Main Avenue, Meniala. I'm here tonight to briefly just, we've talked about Airbnb's before. However, when the ordinance will eventually come to, to the council, unfortunately, we're not gonna be here because we have all, coming summer, a lot of medical commitments, so we will not be able to be here, but I just wanted to briefly address you with just a couple of closing points, so that when it comes up, maybe you could take a look at it, is. I wanna reiterate that we are not against any long or short term rentals. Our concern has been the short term rentals. For short term, like one or two nights. And it is like a revolving door, next door to us. Since November seventh, since we're here, to, to the present date. That's a hundred and fifty days. And out of those hundred and fifty days, only ten days, there, there's been no renters. A hundred and forty days, we've been having strangers next door. And as I had mentioned previously. That Airbnb is rented for about two hundred days out of three sixty-five. And I'm just gonna pick a number. The average is four p- four people per stay. And sometimes more than that. Simple math, four people times two hundred is eight hundred people a year. Times five years, it's four, four thousand people next door to us. May Griffith, who all of you know, she'd be turning in her grave right now, seeing what's happening to her house. Owners of Airbnb's have rights. We too have rights, being. Where our rights are being seriously violated, contributed to traffic, noise, parking cars where Michelle cannot get ingress and ingress down the sidewalk because there's so many cars. Parties, bachelor parties, that's what goes on next door to us. Frankly, we don't feel safe anymore with that kind of traffic. I'm sure many, many of those renters are nice people, and, and this audience, I'm sure many people do rent Airbnb's, but they respect the people next door, whereby perhaps after eleven o'clock, you dial it down substantially, you don't keep going till five in the morning, that's what we experience. If regulations were ever addressed, disclosure, like a realtor, I'm waiting for the day realtors gonna have on their disclosure, when you list a home for sale, is there an Airbnb next door? I would not buy next door if I knew there was an Airbnb. But Airbnb is, is a trend today, it's gonna continue to rise as the years go by, and you recently, the founders rich, where there's nineteen hundred and fifteen residents, and the developer too wanted to make sure that they could rent. So I'm asking you, yes, seriously consider the ordinance that Scott and his staff been working so very hard at, and yes, you're, you're trying to appease us, but it's the city, there's more, more people, residents in the city other than us, that are experiencing issues with Airbnb's. So I ask you to, to look at that for the good of the city. An ordinance, I, in my viewpoint, is like a permit. With that said. You've heard me say many a times. We don't have HOAs. You are our HOA in Old Meniala. So I hope that when this does come before you sometime this year, and we're not available, with all the things we presented like tonight, if you'll look at it very seriously, and pick it apart, and see if there's something we can do as a city to create an ordinance for short term vacation rentals, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Nicole Marie, eight seven nine High Point Circle, I stand in front of you today, adorn this, this lovely slash that I gained this weekend by competing for the Miss Corporate America pageant here in the lovely state of Florida. I walked away with three titles and a whole lot of love and understanding that, of the work that we're doing here. So first off, I wanna say thank you for all of the meetings and the support and the things that we've been having over the last couple of weeks, and I wanna say thank you for being open to considering some of the proposals and things that Eco Root Sanctuary has been submitting to you. Um, I went up there representing Eco Root Sanctuary and the nonprofit work that we're doing, um, and the main thing that we continued to reiterate to them was that at Eco Root Sanctuary, we were all about establishing balance within our community. And we did that by the Conservation and Development Initiative, where we're on, we're educating people that both conservation and development can coexist, and it's about sustainability. So I had the opportunity to talk to a bunch of lovely, incredible, and talented women all throughout the state this weekend, talk about the work that we're doing here in Meniala, the, the visions and things that we're bringing to the council, and how the most important thing about this is that, you know, conservation, education, and community get to exist in under one roof. Um, one of the things that I said in my pitch was that Florida poet Alan Autry wrote that I am the Florida paradise, that dreams come true beneath these skies. That line reminded me so much why Eco Root Sanctuary started to begin with, right, because paradise isn't a place that we get to visit, right? People come here to see the hills, you know, to be an hour and a half from the beach, to experience the, the simple living. This is something that we get to protect, preserve, and passion on, so I am honored that I was able to represent the city this weekend, I'm honored that I was able to represent the nonprofit, and I am grateful, uh, for the relationships that we're building, so thank you so much for your support, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have rollover seconds, so she's got forty-five for the next meeting.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Candy Alexander, eight seven two Meadow Park Drive in Meniala, and I just wanted to come before you and say that about two weeks ago, at our last meeting, my son, or the previous two weeks, uh, my son came before you and let you know that he was heading to Tallahassee on Autism Awareness Day, we wanna let you know that we did get to Tallahassee, we spent the entire day, um, uh, at the state capitol, he did a wonderful job, he was able to visit many of our local representatives, um, Truenow and Yarski's office, and he also got to meet with the Appropriations Chair, which is Senator Hopper, and, um, really supported the firefighters. Um, we were running into firefighters left and right that day, and unbeknownst to us, they had a mandate that day to get there for some other legislative, um, processes that they were working on that was sent out statewide, so, I mean, we were literally running into them in the elevators. Um, this is April first, it was Autism Awareness Month, and so I just wanted to come before you and let you know that, uh, one of your citizens represented well, um, he did have a mission, he did accomplish that, um, and we're just grateful that he was able to, uh, you know, do, do that on his, um, his awareness and, um, share his story, and as a citizen in Meniala, we just wanted to keep you informed, so thank you all very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? They're, they're working on the landscape outside, anything's possible.
It was either that or last call. Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Good to see all of you, thank you for what you do in your service, I appreciate it a lot, I'm Don Shepherd, the COA president at the Oaks that you know well of, six oh eight South Main Avenue, close to Tiki Bar, that's why I tell everybody they know right where that is. I'm here, I just have a question about the sewer project that I'd heard about, about two years ago, and all I wanna know is, is still in the plans, or works to do, or?
Mark can give you an update on that.
There's a reason why I'm asking. Yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's been designed, but the project, uh, we're saving money for that project, but at the same time, we have to hold, uh, hold what we have right now until the wastewater plant is expanded. So we're, we're, um, we're short, uh, a little bit of the funding, but even if we had the funding, we have to wait until the wastewater plant's expanded.
So what's going on?
What's that, oh, we're gonna be doing a roofing project and such, you know, in that area, that's gonna be, when we do that, I'm gonna coordinate the timing, making sure we're not in the way of y'all, or, you know, such.
So, okay.
You take presidents, and that's gonna probably be a project pretty big, but just curious, and we have a lift station that's been at the Oaks for forty-five years, that's costing us a lot of money to maintain, I've been there three years as president, and it's, it's been a sore spot, so.
But it's through Claremont, so y'all, it, it's going to Claremont, right? The lift station, but the original agreement was, when we get the lift station, we'll take it over once we get the piping there, is that, my mistake, and that's what it was?
Yep.
Okay. So we're coming.
So there's no window of maybes, a year?
No.
Two years? Probably, probably three years. An estimate. All right, well, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Lot of time.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll close, public comment, if you think of something, we have another one at the end of the meeting. Um, consent agenda. Any questions on anything on this? The one thing I don't see on the consent agenda, if I see a lot of repairs to City Hall, Mark, is the bathroom is gonna get fixed, correct?
Uh, yes.
Running?
We have, uh, a discussion about that, it, we may have, we're not certain yet, but one of the contractors is advising, we may have to shut the bathrooms down for up to four weeks while they make the repair.
All the bathrooms?
All of them over that section.
Well, that's the only section we got bathrooms, isn't it, beside your office in the hall? So I guess we'll get in a trailer?
We would have to get something for outside, yeah.
Okay, so it still needs to get fixed, if you don't mind, cause it's not gonna fix itself, and sooner, sooner the, better, please. Okay. And then they got to rip up all the sod that they just put down today?
Um, m- most of that will be cutting the slab up inside the building.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, thank you.
So will the restrooms be on our next meeting consent agenda?
I think he probably needs a couple, a couple.
Couple more weeks, okay.
Couple meetings to work at it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that said, um, any comments on the consent agenda? Bring it back to council for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the city manager's consent agenda.
Got a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Got a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, item six, proposal for Trailhead Park improvements.
Um, this is a draft, uh, RFP, we just are seeking council's input on any changes you wish to make, and we can take it back for a final review once, once that's done.
I think Trailhead Park was Councilman Hernandez's project.
Mm-hmm.
And so I don't really feel comfortable with making, have you talked to him yet about it, or have you sent him a draft proposal?
Um, I have a week or two ago, and I think Scott spoke with him today, um.
Okay.
About it. Yeah, I just, I was actually speaking with him about another topic, but I mentioned this was on the agenda tonight, and I asked him if he wanted us to wait, and he said no, that he was fine, he didn't wanna delay any longer, the Trailhead Park, having said that, he hasn't seen the RFP, I don't believe yet, and, and it only was recently produced, so. It's up to you all if you, you want to, want to, uh, table it for the next meeting or not, I don't think it frankly will make much difference at all on the timing, the dates here, we got a little bit of leeway, so one meeting won't hurt, frankly, this will give you time to look, in particular, um, the spec- the scope, the items you wanna see in Trailhead Park could use your direction, and frankly, anybody in the public as well, to see the kinds of things you'd like to see, I know there've been proposals that have come forward, but several various things have been mentioned, so.
His project, and so I don't really wanna pass on.
Especially if, if Scott's recommending for us to, you know, wait and wait for him to be here, as well as to look over it as, you know.
That's fine.
Yeah, the pre-bid meeting on this isn't till May nineteenth, so even if we wait until April fifteenth, there would be enough time to advertise it and get everybody in, so I.
Sure.
Okay, sounds good.
Even, so I, I am relaying to you that he said, don't hold up for him, he did not want it all, but I don't think it'll hurt to.
Make a motion.
He did not want it all, but I don't think it'll hurt to.
Yeah, because the kickoff date is not until May, so it doesn't.
Let's make a motion to table item six.
Motion. Can I get a second?
A second.
First and second. Is there anybody in the audience who wants to speak on this, or you want to wait till the next meeting? Sorry about that.
I didn't know if I'd be allowed if we're tabling or not. I just have, what I was gonna say may not be relevant right now, so I guess my first question, Jennifer Morrison, sixty-four, Golden Don Loop, is when you say, because I read the RFP an hour before I got here, and it was very vague. So when you say that we have opportunity to provide more detail, how does, what does that look like?
Just that. There's, as you see, there's a project scope, but it is very vague.
Yes.
Talks about amenities and improvements, but doesn't get specific. So if there are specific things, you know, if we know we want to have
a merry-go-round.
Four pickleball courts or something.
Not that we're gonna put a merry-go-round there, but if you wanted to very specifically say.
Yeah.
This type of.
If we want four pickleball courts or something.
Again, or?
I don't think so.
I think it's just the next meeting, we'll throw some things out, some ideas, that we want this, this, and then just make sure. So it's written vague with a couple specifics. So this is, we want a pickup truck, but we want these options on it, basically. We want power windows, or this, that, but ultimately.
Yeah, and there is no budget set? So my concern is, we're sitting out an RFP for contractors to have come in with multiple different quotes, because there is no budget and no set details.
I don't think anybody's discounting that, and I know you're on your time, but I think that's why we're waiting for Eric to get a little bit more direction of what his vision is.
Okay.
Because we've heard.
I will save my speech for that, then, for next.
If you want to pre-send your speech to Eric, feel free to.
And Jennifer, if you want to, feel free to email any suggested comments or quotes to, in the meantime, and we'll try to add those in before next meeting.
Sure, we'll do.
I know, obviously, you and the park committee as well, so I know you're not officially on that anymore, but.
Yeah, so my main thing was, it's basically for the playground structures and stuff like that, all of the information was basically provided, so exactly what the residents wanted. So I want to make sure we honor the hard work that the previous committee and the residents did with designing that playground structure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thirty minutes for my next one.
Thanks.
Nicole Marie again, hello, thank you. So I know that we just mentioned the whole workshop thing, and it was like quickly pushed to the side. But I just kind of want to plant the seed of potentially having a workshop on this. I know that there was a long, drawn-out, crazy one last time, and I think that if the intention is to be able to make a decision and vote on the next meeting, having a workshop between then will give us an opportunity to pad out those details, figure it all out in a sit-down session. So this way, it's not a back-and-forth or any confusion when it comes to the meeting next time. And it's a simple, we've already discussed it, this is what we're voting on, and we move to the next thing. So I, I don't know if it's something that you can vote on. I know that's something you're tabling, but maybe consider having a workshop on this so that we can really pad out the details for the RFP, giving everyone an opportunity, now that things have calmed down and we're all in a good place, to be able to discuss exactly what's going there. Because I think if we were to just wait for the meeting next time, it's gonna be a lot of pressure and, you know, making decisions that if we can just sit down and have a short one, which we have proven to be able to do, and everyone kind of comes to the table. I think it would offer a lot of clarity and a lot less stress. That is my two cents. You can take it to the bank, deposit it, and get a dollar back. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that concept, I don't disagree with the workshop, because I am concerned about it. We're putting a lot of money into the CRA at the Trailhead. I got hammered last weekend pretty hard with the traffic at the park at the MAC, and then they want to do a lot of things at the library, and there's only so many CRA funds that we have. And so if you put, you know, there are a group of people that want this at the Trailhead, but there's also a whole subdivision that wants you to put parking at the MAC, so there's not that. So we can't, we have to really figure out where these, what is our priorities? We've had the discussion before about doing a CRA, and I think it's more of, not to your point of the park, but I think us as a council or as the CRA board needs to prioritize, what is our priorities? We have X dollars. We're gonna delegate here, here, and here with a limit on what we're gonna do, knowing that that CRA has to also fund other projects within the city, the sewer. So if you're taking, you know, if you put four million dollars in Trailhead Park, then you're taking four million dollars of putting sewer to The Oaks, because that's the same dollars. It's in the same package. So we've got to figure those pieces out of what is the priorities when you start making all these improvements? And it's not just the parks improvement, but figure out where the money, where the money is coming from. Not saying that Trailhead Park doesn't need to get done, but it's a circus over there at the MAC, and maybe it's because it's the Spring Games or whatever, but those people do not pay attention to signs.
Well, and having the workshop would just give us an opportunity to do that, so it's not all here.
I think it's a CRA workshop.
Yeah, in general.
But it fits into the part of where we're gonna spend the money. But Eric, I know, has talked about it.
Can I make a recommendation to have that workshop on the twenty-second? And have Eric lead it?
That's fine. I'm fine with that.
Okay. I like to make that motion, if I need to, if a motion needs to be made.
So how do we need to do this? So it's a CRA. We'll figure it out, CRAs, because the parks fall underneath the CRA. There are some park dollars, but a majority of them are gonna be the CRA dollars coming from it.
Yeah, and there's a few ways to handle Trailhead Park. We're looking at different options. We have some quotes for a master site plan for the park from our, one of our planning providers. So you could do an RFP for just repairing what's there right now. We have separate quotes for the bathroom, but to get the ball field up, to put a sidewalk over the ball field, some bleachers, to redo the basketball court. And then you can have Inspire come in and do a full site plan, which is where those ideas will come in.
But my concern about Trailhead, if we do anything there, you're totally leaving the MAC. And those people are parking all over the place on the weekends. So we have to figure out the balance, because where is that piece? Again, I know that we tried to get the trees cut down and a temporary parking that kind of fell to a wayside, because those people, they left town. It looks like they're gone. So we're gonna have to come up with an option, but we've got to figure both of these out. They're both parks. We've got to figure them out. So, yeah, I'm fine with the workshop on the twenty-second. Is that okay for you, Jen?
Sure.
So we'll do the twenty-second, a CRA, and then in the CRA prioritizations, we'll put parks as part of a bullet point.
Yeah, because we can also discuss the MAC field with that one, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because that falls underneath there, too.
Yep.
Because I don't really see the county jumping in and fixing that anytime soon. We're gonna have to own that one.
And Mayor, just for clarity, the trees, you were talking about that five acre parcel to the... Okay, just want to make sure that's the one we were talking about, so I can put it in my notes. Thank you guys so much. I appreciate it.
It's just what to do with that parcel.
Right, yes, understood. Yes, thank you.
So do we want to wait to consider this request for a proposal until after that workshop then, or?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
We'll have to really evaluate this all.
Dave Jaeger, twenty-seven fifty Purple Meadow Court. I guess what the frustrating part is, is Mr. Hernandez needs to obviously lead it, because he's been leading that. But now we're talking, we have the CRA money for The Oaks. If I lived there, I'd be totally disappointed, because we've been talking about The Oaks for fifteen years. And now we hear about education, there's not enough parking, but we put all the fence up, and we put all the no parking signs, but we didn't cut the trees down with an empty lot we own. We've owned for many, many years, and we wait, and we built a fire department, and we take twenty-five spaces away, and, you know, and then we had, you know, we had the farmer's market, and there's no parking anywhere, and I parked on the grass, and so it's just frustrating. So whatever happens, we just need to make a defined decision and be done, because we're all over the place.
Yep.
And again, you know, you don't want people parking on Education Boulevard, but you don't give them extra parking. And we bring people in, so we can use that, because it's kind of a highlight of Meniala. Have a great park facility, and we lease it back to the county, but we lock everybody off, but we don't give them more parking. And we have a school that could use the parking, and so it's just kind of frustrating that. And I mentioned that piece of land at Hancock and Education about three years ago. You know, we were building a fire department, and we've been doing this, what, for three years? Well, okay, we take twenty-five spaces away, like, did we not look at that? So, thank you.
Thank you.
So do I need to make a motion for the twenty-second?
I think we.
Just to be specific on.
We can't make a motion for twenty, we're doing the CRA workshop on the twenty-second.
Right.
It's just a consensus.
We're just a workshop.
It's consensus.
You can, if you want, but it's fine if the consensus is to have, I assume, to have the workshop.
I'm good with it. Just.
Right, because I just want to be specific as to what exactly we're gonna be doing, because, so it doesn't go someplace else.
It's what are we spending with CRA funds on, and how does, and that will include
Yeah, because.
the MAC parking, focusing on MAC parking, Trailhead Park, and other projects, which would be any of the sewer deceptive, sewer deceptive projects in Old Meniala, because that's, those dollars earn, those dollars go there, too.
So.
And anything at the Schoolhouse Library.
So that workshop on the twenty-second is gonna be a multiple of things, not just the two that we just discussed?
It's just prioritizing. We have to have another, we have to do something else, but we need to figure out, if our top priority is sewer deceptive, that takes a big chunk of the money, so that kind of negates any other projects that we're doing. If we're trying to do small projects, you can't put, you know, I've heard anywhere from, I know we've presented at nine hundred to a million, to four point five at Trailhead Park. Well, four point five is a huge number when you're gonna put a Trailhead Park when you don't have something at the, at the MAC. So we've got to figure out the balance between the two. What do we do at Trailhead? Do we just do pickleball courts?
Right.
And some, and some.
Those are just some heavy topics, and I just don't want the workshop to lose the point.
But as council has said, we've got to stick a stake in the ground and decide what we're doing and stick with it, but we have been all over the board in the last two years. Yeah, this is good. We want to do this. It's kind of, we kind of change with the weather.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, sorry.
Hi, it's okay. Candy Alexander, eight seven two Meadow Park Drive. As a current member of your volunteer Parks Committee, please keep me informed on this new workshop that you're doing. I know that I had a meeting with the city and encouraged some small wins for the Trailhead. I'm sorry that Mr. Hernandez is not here tonight to be able to talk about that. But we do still have an active group of citizens here that are working on your behalf, so if we can just kind of coordinate that and work towards those solutions of what this committee is going to continue to look like in all the parks, we would really appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, and I talked to previously, I think, that I was working with the wellness, with the Louisville Foundation on some stuff at the school, at the library. I will step away from that and let it go to the parks, Trailhead Parks. So any improvements to Trailhead Park has to do with recreation. They can try to get for that funding. We just have to turn it around in April and figure it out. So we'll do it in the CRA, so that is another pool of money that they can go after if we're not gonna do stuff at the park, so we've got to figure that piece out. Okay, so it's been tabled. Can I get a motion to table till the twenty? So we're getting the, do we, I just want to make sure, did we, Trailhead Park did officially get tabled till the next meeting, or?
If you'd like to make a motion to, the RFP is not an advertised item, so it's not necessarily table it, but my understanding is that you want to wait with the RFP until your workshop on the twenty-second, the CRA workshop, which will focus on parks, from what I'm hearing, but you will also look at other projects, just.
Can a takeaway from that meeting be, go ahead and put our RFQ from the workshop, or does it have to be at a meeting?
Oh, you staff could go ahead after that. We could go ahead, because it's an administrative. So yes, at the workshop, if the consensus is to move ahead then with the RFP,
Then we wouldn't have to go back.
Yes.
Okay, that was my question.
Yes.
Okay, let's try to keep this on timeline. Thank you.
One thing just to mention, it's a bit of an art. The RFP is seeking a firm, design firm, construction firm, to, you know, to construct the actual park improvements. We're trying to hit the sweet spot about giving them enough detail so they know what we want them to do versus not telling them too much, because we want to get their receptive. They may have ideas of how to do things that we haven't considered. So I do think it's, we need more detail than what's in there now. And I think a lot of these things we mentioned could be specified, but it may be when they respond back, they may say, "Oh, here's a much better way to do the parking," or something like that. That's part of the reason of getting a professional firm to assist with that, but.
Yeah.
Anyway, just to keep that in mind, I guess.
With that said, moving on to irrigation. I thought it said irritation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll go ahead and do the first reading while Joyce is getting her stuff in there. Uh, ordinance twenty-five dash oh-two on first reading in ordinance of the City Council, the City of Meniala, Florida, amending chapter seventy of the Code of Ordinances in section one-ten-nine of the Land Development Code of the City of Meniala, revising landscape and irrigation requirements, providing for conditions, providing for inclusion, the Code of Ordinances and Land Development Code, providing for conflict, providing for separability, providing for an effective date. This is just first reading this evening.
So this ordinance is a continuation of our progress to do things to help conserve water. We have to show St. John's that we're making continuous steps. They're very pleased with the irrigation ordinance we passed previously, and they've been using it as an example in other cities, so that's great. This one here, there's two parts to this. First of all, one of the things they've been bringing up is that there's too many people that are using over twenty thousand gallons a day to water their yards and their houses, I mean, a month. And they, that's what they consider that, I'm sorry, Mr. Saunders, I'll try to talk a little louder. That's what they consider should be what the maximum is used per household, whether we agree with that or not. That's what their consideration is. So that for, one of the items in this ordinance would make, make it so that there's an enforcement in it. Right now, we don't have any enforcement. Our people are doing a very good job, our meter readers, our code enforcement, our water conservation people are going around trying to educate people. They're actually going to some of these houses and knocking on the doors and talking to the people about how to set their irrigation meters correctly, you know, informing them that they're using too much water, they need to, you know, cut back. But some of these people do not care. They don't care if their bill is five hundred dollars a month, because they want to water their lawn. So we have to have some way of enforcing this. So this would, this ordinance would have a three-step process. The first time, we would go to you verbally, knock on your door, explain to you what was going on, explain to you you're choosing, using too much water, offer to help if you need with your setting your irrigation meter correctly, informing people of what the days and times for watering are, that kind of thing. The second one, if they don't listen, and their bill is still twenty thousand gallons, over twenty thousand gallons for the month, and this is just irrigation, this is not potable water, then the next month, they would get a letter. Hey, we've warned you, you know, you need to reduce water consumption. And then warn them that the third step will be, we will cut your irrigation water off. And the third step would be to either disconnect the irrigation line. They would still be able to get their potable water, it wouldn't affect that at all, but they would disconnect the irrigation line. Or if they don't have a separate irrigation line, there's a backflow that connects the irrigation in the older part of the city with the water line. That backflow would be disconnected, so that all they would get is potable water, no irrigation water. So, I mean, I know that's kind of a drastic step, but we, you know, we're still working on trying to get our CUP approved, and we've got to show them that we're doing steps to, you know, reduce the water consumption in the city. The second one is more of a positive thing. It's, it requires a soil amendment, and it gives specifics for all the new construction that goes up, whether it's a house or whether it's a business. They would have to do this particular soil amendment, and it makes the soil retain the moisture much better. Because as you know, when you do construction, a lot of the topsoil gets pushed off and doesn't get put back, and you're dealing with pure sand. So this would help. So this would help retention of water, it'd be better for people's yards, they wouldn't have to water as much, plus it would help their grass be better, um, that kinda thing. The, uh, information in this, this is actually, the, uh, amendment, um, is, actually comes from Clermont Standard. So they're requiring it already with people, and they provided it to us. We're, the cities in the area are working together on this project, trying to get water reduction in the area, and they shared it with us. We, and St. John's is all for it, so we added it to this ordinance. Now P and Z did, recommended approval, but they wanted a little something added for some way for people to get the water turned back on. So, um, yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure how you might wanna do that, whether you wanna make it a court, code enforcement issue, and it would have to go through a magistrate, or whether it could be a probation thing, that, that's kinda up to you to decide how you wanna do that, if you wanna do that, but, so, thank you.
Thank you.
You have any comments, Joe?
Yeah, I got several comments, but the first consideration is, um, generally in a ordinance like this, you need to explain to people why this is necessary, and I didn't see that fully explained. As an example, most of the newer homes in the city have a reclaimed water line. Most people, I would think, would believe that reclaimed water is expended, no matter what you do with it. Stick it in the ground, use a thousand gallons, use a hundred thousand gallons, reclaimed water is used water. I don't think most people will understand that reclaimed water that comes out of the waste treatment plant is not sufficient to drive to power the reclaimed water lines. Therefore, we have to put in wells that take water out of the aquifer to fill the reclaimed water line. I don't know whether we'll ever reach a point where a hundred percent of the water going down the reclaimed water line is reclaimed water. That's a possibility, but I don't see it in the next decade. So I think people need to understand that they can't just use all the reclaimed water they want, because it's not that simple. And I think that needs to be explained to people, I think they have a right to know that. I also think that when you say, uh, businesses or commercial use is not allowed, that precludes garden shop, a nursery shop, or like a Walmart to water their, their plant life. And, uh, that would definitely have to be an exception to some point. Or perhaps we ought to rethink how, how we structure the water system in the city, and maybe if you build a department store like a Walmart, you should put in your own water system for irrigation, i.e. put your own well in and supply your own water. There are places up in the hills already that use their own wells. In fact, there are abandoned wells in the hills, if I'm not misspeaking, I think there's three or four of them, that, uh, the people who develop up in the hills could use that water, and they're already there. I don't know whether you gotta go back to St. John's and say, give me a permit to use that well, because the well had a permit when it was sunk, so, that I don't know. So, I think it's important that people understand why they are limited in using their water. The water that's under the ground belongs to the people, we are the people. It doesn't belong to the city, and it doesn't belong to the St. John's Water Authority. However, they're given by the state authority to regulate water that comes out of the aquifer, and out of the rivers, and out of the ponds, and all of that stuff. Many years ago, I was on the committee to, to conserve water, and that was all of South Lake. I went to committee meetings up in Leesburg, and there was extensive talk about water. Where you can get water, where you can get more water, how much you can use the water, that's a long-term discussion. However, people would say, why can't I put in my own well? And they did. And anybody who went to St. John's and said, gee, I'd like to put in my own well, oh, go ahead. But when it comes to the city, we generally speak, generally speaking, try to get the developers to put in their HOA covenants, that you're not gonna put a well in that development. There's a couple of reasons why that's done, and, uh, I don't consider them important, but we need to consider the whole system. This proposed ordinance does not consider the whole system. Now, I can go on and on with a whole bunch of other things, like, you can't, you can't make rules for the hills that don't, that apply to everybody in the city, and half the city, the legacy part of the city. We don't have reclaimed water. We use potable water, that's the drinking water. We use potable water to water our lawns and do our irrigation, and we've been doing that for a long time. Now, if somebody's gonna ride around my neighborhood and say, well, you're using too much water, how do they know I'm using too much water on the lawn? Well, your meter reading generally leads twenty thousand gallons a month for the last six months. All of a sudden, you're using thirty thousand gallons, you're using more water. Yeah, I filled my swimming pool. Oh, well, that would be okay. Well, I'll do this. Well, that would be okay. Well, I had a leak in my water supply system. Okay, but bear in mind, this is your first warning. That's all gonna be done by somebody who went around the city dealing with all this. What does that mean? That means we're gonna add on people, we're gonna have a new department called the Water Inspection Department, and that increases the city's budget, it increases the staff of the city, and increases the management of the city. Now, again, I could go on and on about fittings, about, about backflows that are mentioned in this, but I think, I think this needs to be looked at in a little bit of light, as a part of the system, not just, let's make some rules that stop people from using water. I don't know, I don't know all the answers, but I didn't take the time to put together a proposal on how to do it right, in my opinion. My background includes a lot of water work, design of water plants, water towers for machines that we use to provide, one of the things I had to do in my life. However, when you come to a household, and you start telling people, we're gonna come and check up on you, and if we have to, we wanna come into your house and look at your, the settings on your irrigation meter, I'm gonna say, you can come in if you got a warrant, and don't you dare take my backflow valve out, so that I have to put it back in. So there's a lot of animosity on my part to this, to this proposed ordinance. End of speech.
For me, I'm not gonna repeat anything you said, but I do agree with everything you said. I struggle with a lot of people on the landscaping, that has been a lot of landscaping, a lot of money, um, trees. So if we cut off water and we start telling you that, then is the city liable for the, you know, three thousand dollar palm tree that you put in your front yard that died because you didn't have water on it? You told me I couldn't have water, so are you gonna reimburse me for that, for my grass? When I'm allowed to use it again, and now I have to spend another seven thousand dollars for a five hundred dollar pallet of sod to come get laid? So there's a part here where there is that. Other people, if I was, from my position, you're saying, well, we have to get our CUP, our conditional use permit for the growth, I would be like, don't grow. So I would challenge St. John's, if you don't want this, send us a letter that tells us that we can't grow anymore, and we will be happy to send it to the developers and say, we can't do it, but we're having to play the bad guy here, not St. John's. St. John's needs to send up and send the letter that says, if you do not do this, you will not be allowed to grow any of, you have to stop all development. That's what I want. I'm not gonna cave for anything. St. John's is playing, is trying to scare us, and I'm not gonna scare on this. They need to send a letter that says, if you don't do this, then you gotta say, we're not gonna approve, if we're, if we don't approve your, you have to do this for us to prove your CUP. They need to send us a letter and say, if you don't do this, you have to stop development, and then let's send it to the Ritzens, to the Squormans, to all these developers, and let them take on St. John's. Because we told them the number, because they didn't like the number, they made their own number up. So that's where I am. I'm, I'm not gonna support any of their stuff personally, and I'll play the long game on it, so.
No, I agree, Joe. I thought that was a really good, um, a good explanation of what's going on. And I'm a proponent, I don't think government needs to be infringing on our rights. But I think it's the first reading, and I'd like to see what you've proposed.
Yeah, so we can have this discussion. I would love for St. John's, I would love for a decision maker from St. John's to come here. Pam, anything? One second, Jennifer.
No.
Come on up. Need to get a red light, green light up there, too.
There, there's an alternate to asking them to come here. When we've had problems with the county, we have gone to the county and laid on the table where we stand. And that happened with the Turnpike Interchange, it happened with some other things. Even if it's just Mark and I, or you and Mark, or, we could actually go together, actually, in this case, I think.
So, yeah, let's-
The, the city attorney would, uh, tell us all we gotta do is, other than the fact that we went to the meeting. I think it's possible that if they won't come here, we'll go there. We'll go to St. John's, and where are they in?
Palatka.
By Lakwa, where, where?
That's fine.
Palakalaka.
So, yeah, let's go with that, yeah.
Um, so, I am, I'm, I'm glad I'm hearing what the council is saying, and I agree with you, but I'm still gonna go through some of my stuff, because I think that some things need to be addressed. Um, if this comes up for a second reading. The questions that I would like answers to, um, after my time is up, are how many homes are actually exceeding this amount, how often are they doing so, and during what months? Has the P and Z looked at the driest seasons in Florida and the increased need for irrigation? Are common areas managed by HOAs being counted as, um, being, needing to be in compliance with this, with all of their water, their fields that they need to water? And we are all bound by HOA laws, our backyards are, not everyone has a fence, so we still get dinged, um, violations by HOA laws that require us to, um, water our yards. And the city's own summary to the council, it says that the St. John's Water District says a parcel should not use more than twenty thousand gallons per month, per lawn. To, um, everything that I read, that is false, and I actually called them up directly, and they confirmed no such rule exists. So I'm not sure, sure why the city is pushing that claim as a justification for these types of violations. If you're going to punish residents, at least make sure we're being honest about the reasoning. So I would like some concrete evidence that is not just because the, I mean, I had a thirty-minute call with this lady, and she said they've never imposed a twenty thousand, they don't, they say, the rule is you put a tuna can out there, and it's not supposed to overfill, overfill it, and you're supposed to be guided by your CPU guidelines. Um, the real issue here is the lack of reclaimed water. Homeowners are being told they're the problem, when in reality, the city hasn't provided an alternative. And now we're proposing to charge or violate their rights for relying on the only system available. Reclaimed water is still two to three years out, but not important enough to make it as a separate item on the project list. And instead of directing all available resources to accelerating that project, we're talking about fining families for trying to preserve their landscape and Florida heat. Mineola residents are the only ones who built this city. Our property taxes are what keep it running. If your plan is to punish those same residents for the city's failures to build out infrastructure, then you need to reevaluate your priorities. What happens when yards go dead, curb appeal drops, and home values start falling? What is this council aiming for? If the city wants to fix water usage, then fix the infrastructure. Reclaimed water should be the immediate top priority, not something to get around to in a few years while residents get hit with fines. Um, I would appreciate the, um, data behind this, and, um, my understanding is we do have enough, um, water sewage now to do the reclaimed water, and the project needs to be high priority, so we can actually start conservation as well. Thank you.
If you don't mind, in all due respect, you asked for a lot of technical data points-
Yes.
That I'm sure we do not have.
Okay.
Can you please meet with Mark and kind of come up with a balance, 'cause I'm asking you a compromise. Our staff is thin, or is it spread pretty thin, if we spend all the time going after data, going after data points?
Mm-hmm. Well, I just-
I'm just, I'm just saying, so, please understand-
It's, it's, an assumption as a resident would be that that was looked at when the resident, when the ordinance was being written.
Right, and I'm trying to, and I was on my phone, because we were just talking about irrigation, and I was trying to, I just put a new app on my phone, and I was trying to figure out how many gallons I use to water my lawn, and so I was, I wasn't trying to be rude, I was trying to get, try to get it to understand, but I don't understand that app works, and my wife's not here to show me. So, um, but, but-
Those are fair questions, we'd be happy to meet with her and go over-
Yeah, if you can, just, I mean, I would love to know, like, every, but we don't know every house, what they, we could give you a list. But to Joe's point, um, the structure is a little bit different. Yards here are bigger, I'm sure my watering of my yard is different than the watering of a yard in Onmore. I've got a hundred front, a hundred foot front, they've got fifty foot, so there are some, some pieces-
I have a hundred and seventy-foot backyard.
I'm talking, the width.
The width. I have a very big backyard.
So you got a pile?
Yes, I have a, I have a-
So, but, for the most part, so, um, if you can get with Mark, I think they're valid, but I think as a group, we need to address this, but I, I do not feel comfortable with blindly passing an ordinance to appease St. John's at all.
I agree.
I have no problem with putting on the roller skates and going to Apopka, to Apalukka, wherever.
Palakalaka.
Palatka.
Apapka.
Same thing. Okay, thank you. Yeah, we'll show.
Hi, puppy. Hello, Nicole Marie again. I know they love all of the things that I have to say tonight. Um, so I want to first off say, Joe, thank you so much. Uh, I feel like I learned so much about you tonight with your water background. That was, that was very impressive. Thank you. Um, so, I agree that this St. John's thing is bullhonky. I, it's, it's nonetheless, but I, I think that there's a medium balance here that we can settle on, where we're not like driving to Palatka, not Apalukki, to go knock down their door. Um, I really think that we can start here by holding a community education workshop on water conservation. Um, I would like to see if you guys are open to the idea of this. Um, I created a proposal as I was sitting in the audience, just to kinda see what it would look like. Um, and being able to kind of offer some incentives to the residents to ensure that they're all coming out to receive it, whether we work with South Lake TV to see if we can have it advertised, something along those lines, where we're educating, um, the members of Mineola, so we're kind of like doing our part by St. John's, but we're not implying this crazy ordinance. Um, and we're just kinda educating them, we're giving them an incentive, maybe we have a raffle, maybe there's, you know, at this, uh, workshop, we're able to have a representative, um, you know, from St. John's, or have, you know, someone like Joe or myself doing conservation and sustainability talks. Maybe something that we can make like a little afternoon of, or something like that, where we're encouraging the community to come out, we're educating the community, um, on, you know, ways to properly irrigate, we're giving alternative solutions, and things like that, so that this way, we're taking care of our own. So I think doing something like this will help kind of bridge the gap. Um, I have always learned, working with kids, that reward goes a lot better than punishment. So if I can teach you through play and through reward, then we are solving all of our time, and I don't have to get stressed about it. So, um, I would love to maybe discuss or hear your thoughts on maybe doing some sort of water education workshop for the members of Mineola, including some sort of incentive that would encourage the members, uh, the city- for the members of Mineola, including some sort of incentive that would encourage the members, uh, the city residents to come on out, to learn about this, different options, whether we, um, educate them on, hey, you're only supposed to water on these days, because that could also be a problem, that people are coming in so quick, they don't know what day is that they're watering. Um, giving them alternative solutions, so that we are no longer having to, you know, threaten taking their water. I think that would be a better option. And, you know, we're not driving to Palatka, so.
Okay.
If you have any thoughts on that.
I have a thought on it, like always. Kind of idea, but it's kind of meeting in the middle. Um, having people come out here is not going to happen. I mean, we barely have them come out for elections. But, Mark, I know we met on Friday with our new social media team.
Mm-hmm.
And Mark's number one priority was getting the message out about water conservation over social media. So maybe shifting, lifting and shifting from doing something here with raffles, figuring out a marketing campaign through social media that we get out, and let's see how that works first. Um, but having somebody that knows about water, Mark has suggested getting somebody, not me, who waters my yard all the time, twice a week. Talk about it, but somebody with knowledge, so it's just a different face, but definitely getting the message out there as we lift there, and then we'll see how it goes. But I think a marketing campaign on water conservation through social media, through our new platform, would probably be the best start. Working, if Joe wants to get on talk, or you get on talk about water, um, little tidbits or stuff, you know, working. I'm sure there's already some stuff out that, reaching out to St. John's and saying, if you want us to do this, do you have any prepackaged things? I know Mark's pretty much on it, so he was all on end of the meeting. Had to like try to get him off the topic, but every time I turn around, I'm like, what about water conservation? So I think it's something that we can look for.
Yeah, I, so I don't know if you know this, but as part of Eco Root Sanctuary, I am certified in, uh, it's called Project Wet, so it's water education today. Uh, I can, uh, facilitate for people who need, by the city, who need to be, learn how, about water conservation. And I can also hold classes for the community. So, um, in my mind, when I said workshop, I was thinking something on a weekend where we can include the kids, because when we get the kids really concerned about this, they're going to be on mommy and daddy's back about, don't, don't water your lawn on these days. So, you know, maybe doing something where we can include the whole community. I'm not saying necessarily like our traditional workshop, I was just calling it for the lack of better words. But some sort of like where we're bringing the, the family to, the community together. Uh, you know that when we do things about the kids, I don't know if you've came out here when we had the kids markets, the community does rally and come out when it's anything kid-based. So maybe shifting and educating water education as a family event. And then speaking of giving some literature, you know, I think following it up with that marketing campaign. I just think if we hit it on both angles, we will have a, a better opportunity to reach the residents of this city. Uh, it is something that Grove Land also does in different ways. They're doing it more with the dark sky, and we would be focusing, we'd be the first one kind of focusing it on this conservation. I would be happy to partner with you, talk to you, spit some ideas, figure out how we can do this. But I really think that if we were to include the kids, we would have a better luck, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nathan?
Nathan Foe, 707 Blue Citrus. Uh, Mayor, I think you were looking around, this is the first virtual South Lake TV? If that's what you were looking for, for the cameras, so.
Yeah, I was like, where is it?
Yep, we now have virtual J. So I will skip some of the things I had, because people have already mentioned it. The one thing I want to point out is, I said more at P and Z than just the concern about tiers or shutting people off. There were several things I brought up, and so this, again, is things that I'd like to get shared between the two bodies. Um, some of those things are, I believe, if you look from a legal standpoint, Section D does not state whether it's commercial or not commercial. So we say this limit is only for residential, and they can't do commercial. But I don't see anything in that first section that mentions any classification. So to me, any business can use 20,000 gallons and cannot use more. So there is a legal issue in this documentation that we have to clean up there. I question if we do impose and we shut off and we don't allow them to turn on, it would not be hard for me to dig up my two irrigation lines and just use potable water, um, tie the two together. So I think you'll have people that just, suddenly their potable water usage goes up, and then we defeat the whole purpose of our reclaim. And we're motivating them in the wrong direction if we're not careful. I know a lot of people won't know how to do that, but there are people that will just skirt around their reclaim system. I am, I agree with Councilwoman Debbie that, that, excuse me, Flynn, that this is not something I encourage from a personal rights, civil liberties. If I want to pay pounds of gold to spread water, I should be able to pay in gold and spread water. I don't think we should shut them off. I think there should be a tier pain system, like most cities do, and not just a shut off. I don't agree with that, that just hard line. I have a right to invest if I choose to invest foolishly. We don't mention lot size. There's not very many, but we have five-acre lots in Mineola. Seems unright, uh, unfair that you want to limit my five acres when someone's on a postage stamp and can use the same amount of water. So there should be some mention in here for lot size or prorata for my usage. Um, I flip over to the next page, and where it says the design requirements. We have removed development including, uh, and then, and multifamily. Again, this is for the zero scape section. We've removed and mentioned just single families. So according to my limited law ability, that means anyone with multifamily or commercial no longer obliged by any of these rules. They now can do whatever they want for their landscape requirements, because we have omitted them from this clause. So, oh, I'm running out of time here. Give me one more, I apologize. The last one is for the, uh, sodding. What if it's resod? Do we have to do the amendment if it is a resod? I'm all for the amendment. I didn't like the irrigation at P and Z. I, I think the amendments are better for all of us. But what happens if I resod? Do I then have to do the amendments? Because that could make for a lot of trouble with elevations. Now they're having to tear out soil in order to put back the three inches in irrigation lines. And it doesn't mention resodding. Thank you.
Thank you, Nate.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Cheryl Pavlak at 1808 Carey Street.
Good evening.
I echo a lot of the comments that, I, I echo a lot of the comments that were made. I believe we should fight, uh, St. John Water. What, uh, Councilman Saunders said was very right on. But what I hated about the amendment was a lot of what Nathan said. Joe said, old versus new, okay? I live in Ardmore, it was the first home that was put in Ardmore. And now that I've retired, I'm starting to do a garden, make my nature park in my backyard. So some things that I take exception to, when I dig up my dirt, I'm finding rocks, I'm finding bottles, I'm finding all sorts of things. And this says, all new family dwelling development. What about the stuff that was put there beforehand? Like Joe said, the old stuff. Uh, lot sizes, big versus small. Jennifer mentioned HOAs. They yell at us if our, our lot, lots are, um, have weeds in them, but yet the common area have, has bahia grass, which attracts weeds and all those weeds, because I'm next to a common area and up in my side yard. I personally don't really care about my side yard. My front lawn, I'd like to look pretty, but my backyard is my haven. That's where I want the water usage. So I don't like high water use zone to front and side yards, up to the rear. I want it in the back of my yard, uh, my yard, because that's my haven. So, uh, the other thing is a mulch soil amendments regardless of zoning category. Wouldn't the zoning category have to be in alignment with the, uh, soil requirements? So those are some of the things that I think are wrong with this, but I think the mayor had the best idea. Let's fight, fight. And as Nathan said, it's my right. If I want to pay more money for my bigger lot, I, I want to also have more water for my bigger lot. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dave Jaeger, 2750 Purple River Court. So basically, I go to the post office every day, and this is called junk mail, because it is. It, it really doesn't, it doesn't make any sense. The other part of this is the MAC has wells. We have an ordinance sitting Mineola that Debbie V, Councilwoman Debbie V, put in place, that we couldn't have wells. And we have an ordinance for that, but we have wells. We just drilled a well at the wastewater treatment plant, because we have to supplement the reclaim. Um, I have wells, the MAC has wells, I'm sure the apartment building has wells, there's a well outside here. The fact is, the turnpike, all those beautiful shrubs have wells. Every single one. There's a well when you get on, there's a well when you get off, there's a well down the street, there's one over there. You go down to Oakland, there's wells. So everybody's just drilling wells. And, and the, the fact is, we have an ordinance, you can't have wells, but we don't, we're not the one who gives the permits for wells. Lake County does, um, to, to have a well. So, um, I would love if Mary Jane would just come out of the sky right now and come down, because I've been working on this since 94. This is kind of like when I was a kid, and we're going to recycle, and we're no better today than we were when I was a kid. But Mary Jane was the water police, and she ran the water department. And we put it in water noses, we sent out flyers. But you always had certain people in Oak Valley or wherever the place would just use tons of water. And the fact is, if you tier it, and if they want to water their lawn and more, use more water, you just, it goes to a higher rate. So this is the 15,000 for your normal house? Because you can look at the water bills. If you want to look at the water bills and do a chart, you'll see the water bills, the high user of the, but he just pays more. Portello's, um, has a restaurant here, and they're nationwide. He has a yacht that blocks somebody's view in, in Naples, Florida. He pays $10,000 a month, no different than this. If you want a beautiful lawn, you want to pay more, you pay a higher rate or a fine. And the other thing is, we have a landscape ordinance. We make all these developers do this landscape ordinance. Then we have HOAs to make sure the place looks nice, but we can't water it. But we have it. And by the way, you, we could each have a department just for landscape, of all the landscape we make people put in, and it all dies, and it looks like hell anyway. So this is junk mail. We need, the tier system would work perfectly, because there's some people that don't mind paying, just like the Portello guy. He doesn't mind paying $10,000 a month to get fined by the HOA, because his yacht's too big. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so what do we got from here?
Well.
First reading, but it's, I don't see it coming back in two weeks?
No. Uh, this is, I, I've, I've slowly moved the date back a few times as I've been writing. Um, I agree, actually, I had a lot of concerns about Mark and testify, was not thrilled with even bringing this forward at this time. But we did want to test the waters, so to speak, and get an idea of, of how everybody felt. I think we got a good consensus tonight. I would, um, what I'd like to do, and I haven't been very involved, this was an ordinance, as I understand, that did come from St. John's, at least the recommendation. I don't know from whom or what, but I'd like to look into the background a little more, and maybe report back to you just exactly where this came from and where we stand, as far as if we just don't do it. In the meantime, if, I would suggest we could just table the public hearing and second reading till June 3rd. That's two months to the June 3rd meeting. And like I said, I'll report back in the meantime and let you know, but.
Is this something, I, I think, I would love, I mean, I have no problem going up there, sending Joe, or sending, you know, a delegate up to St. John's, but at this point in time, I would prefer just staff handle it. I mean, you might want to step up and go do a Zoom call with them.
Yeah.
But.
Well, we have a water consultant that advises the city, so we'll, we'll chat with, with her as well and get some ideas. But I, I think this can kind of call a timeout and move this one back a few months, and see whether it's something we want to pursue at all.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So if I get a motion to table the public hearing and second reading to June 3rd, that would be great.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, can I get a second?
All second.
Got first second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As I said, I'll report back, and we'll decide whether we want to even move forward at that point.
Okay, the, um, next one is item eight. I asked us to put it on the agenda. Last meeting, we had some discussion about tearing down the building. Still don't really know where it's at. We did meet out there. I appreciate people showing up, had some contractors come out there, um, about fixing it, tearing it down, what's more effective. I, everybody came to the consensus that we need to do some type of an engineering, structural engineering, to see if it even is worth it, because nobody wants to bid, you know, hey, I can do it for $200,000, and realize that the whole foundation is about to fail. So I think to do due diligence, um, we want to do a request for engineering, and they're going to go look at it and see if it's worth, and then where are we going to go with it? You know, we, we do need a, we do, we need, we do need a facility out there. So after the meeting, you know, I met with, um, or spoke with some engineers. It's going to be expensive either way to try to save it. Even if it's 300, 400,000 dollars, it's probably safer. What I did realize, if we level the building and it comes back out, you're going to have to go through and do the soil samples and everything. So this is a little bit more work that's reusable for that, but, um, so just asking if we can get this done. It buys us a little time. We'd like to have something done, um, by the time the library's open. They felt that they could at least get the outside of it done if they wanted. If the building can get repurposed or cleaned up, we can get the outside looking clean and then fix the inside. But it will look nice for the beginning of the library, or we still have time to level to the ground, and then we'll punt. But again, um, when this comes back, we'll have a better understanding, and we have our SRA meeting of this is where it, we'll know where this is, uh, in this building, in fact. So can, um, anybody in the audience want to speak on this? If not, we'll bring it back. We just need a request for approval to hire a structural engineer, um, engineer to evaluate it. Does anyone want to do that?
No one wants to do it.
Well, then we're just going to let the building just get dilapidated?
Well, if you stop and think of it, we could be passionate about a 100-year-old building, you know? It'd be nice to keep a 100-year-old building. But we didn't take care of it, we didn't maintain it. When I first moved to the city and I looked at it, I was kind of amazed that that building was there. I have many times said, when Mark and I were talking, that we're, we're like, um, the people who own all the deteriorating property in the city. The soffits were falling off of it. The wooden on the back, I think, was rotting away, and eventually had to be taken down. There was a swimming pool that was filled in, so no one would fall in it and crack their head open. The color of it, we've tried to use it for various departments. I don't think that went all so well. And the building, again, deteriorated, deteriorated. So here it is for me, 23 years later, and it's still deteriorating. It's now got plywood stuck on it. And we didn't take care of it. And if you don't take care of something, trying to bring it back to what it was is like building it over again. We'll, we'll remake it from scratch to pretend that we still have a 100-year-old building. And it won't be a 100-year-old building, it'll be something we built recently. And if you look at that building, it's not very functional. And it certainly doesn't blend in with the library. It's going to look like this beautiful library and this silly-looking little building. So I'm sorry I wasn't able to attend the workshop the other night. That's the first meeting I've missed in 17 years. But I have to, I have to tell you how I feel. That building is useless. There's very little sentiment about it, other than the fact that it's 100 years old. And after 100 years, I think it deserves to pass on. It would be nice to have something there that blends in with the library and is functional for a lot of things that we would like to have. Bathrooms, uh, change places, something that will blend with the next thing we put in there. And as usual, and I think you mentioned this last council meeting, we tend to do things a piece at a time. A little here, a little there, a little more, and quite often, they don't blend all together. Many, many years ago, uh, a former mayor of Mineola suggested that we level the whole block and, and redo it in, in a, in kind of a modern fashion with an old taste, like a general store and so forth. Lot of things like they've done up in Claremont. But if you look at Claremont, they had a cute little train depot, that worked out pretty good, they have a Quonset hut. I haven't seen one of those since I was in the army sixty years ago. And they had a little, a little general store, was kinda nice. And, uh, I, I saw a picture of it, and there was a little, uh, old-fashioned car out in front of it, and I said to myself one day, I think I'll go take a look at that store, I got there and it's out of business. So, sometimes you do things that don't happen the way you expect them to. I'd like to see that building taken down. I'd like to see something designed to go with the library. And if I had my brothers, I would've bought that little silly building that they redeveloped, that used to be called Jeannie's Bottle, but we missed the boat on that. It's another story for another day. And then there's the sewing shop and everything. The idea from many years ago would, would be to take the whole block, was a good idea in my opinion. And now we're doing our usual thing, we're piecemealing the thing, one little thing at a time. And to expand that by trying to rebuild a hundred-year-old building that's dilapidated and falling apart is, is, uh, poor judgment, in my opinion. Sorry.
Yep. So, it's not a motion, so I guess the motion dies, and we need to figure out what we do, do we bring it back to, do we make another? Come on up. Do we make another line item to level it for the next meeting, so it's an agenda item, or what do we do?
It's up to council.
Well, I, I think there's a point here where, for transparency of the residents, as they, we, we had a motion to level it, and we didn't get consensus. So we now this other route, so some people shifted gears, and they're in that lane, and I don't wanna, I feel like sometimes we're gonna cut 'em off, like on I-4 without a blinker. Like, oh yeah, well, y'all were talking about getting it engineered, and now you're not, so I think there's a point here where I'm all for level, I'm fine with leveling it, but I think for the public to have input, then they need to know that we're back to debating leveling it again.
Well, that was the idea of the workshop.
Yes, but we came to a discussion at the workshop that you weren't there for.
I just need you to, the whole spiel, please. Sign in and.
Hi, Nicole Marie, eight seven nine, High Point Circle. So we had a workshop that two of the council members weren't present for, we discussed a lot of things that, that workshop. We all came to a general consensus as to why we were going to get a engineer and what was gonna happen if the engineer deemed the building unfit. So, all of those thoughts would've been great to hear, to discuss with you at the workshop that you weren't in attendance for. However, we did make a discussion, the intention for this today was what we discussed, that we were gonna have the ten thousand dollar, no more than ten thousand dollars, to have a civic engineer to come and evaluate the property, to let us know if it was even worth moving forward. The reason why we discussed this as an option was because if we were to level the building, the amount of money that it would cost to level it, to remove the plumbing, to remove the electrical, and then to build something new, was far exceeding than what it would've been to just save the building. It has nothing to do with the fact that it's a hundred-year-old building, it has everything to do with the fact that we are trying to save the city's resources, number one. Number two, we are also trying to be mindful of the fact that we have projects and deadlines that need to be done, and we're not gonna just keep putting money out, level the building, put more money out, rip up the water, put more money out, you know, put sod down, than to rip it all up again and build anew, that's insane. So the reason why we discussed this, and this was supposed to be something that was supposed to be easy-peasy, one-two, we're outta here, was we were going to get the civil engineer to evaluate the building, and then we would bring it back to the table to go from there. It was all about utilizing the city's resources mindfully and not just spending money, scratching things out and start over fresh. So, I mean, I, I don't understand, because, you know, at the, at the beginning, right, let's just kind of flash forward, or flash the time back a little bit, it was you who spoke up against your other council members to agree to a workshop to begin with, the same workshop that you didn't show up for.
That's because I believe in listening to the people of the city.
Fifty-six seconds are still on my clock.
Not because I want that building, Joe.
Fifty-six seconds are still on the clock for my time, you specifically asked for a workshop that you didn't show up for, and now, what, that was the opportunity to have your discussions then, that was your opportunity to come into agreeance, because when we left that table last week, we had an agreeance of what was gonna happen, and now all of a sudden, we're being derailed. This is what it means when people come up here and spend their time, their resources, and their, um, ti, uh, now I'm pleasured, but their time and resource to come over here and talk about it for you to just come up and change your mind. The opportunity to discuss it, Joe, the opportunity to discuss it.
My mind has never changed.
Joe, the opportunity to discuss that.
I'm putting words in my mouth, I'll speak for myself, if you don't mind.
The opportunity to discuss that was at the workshop, and I would've loved to hear your thoughts and concerns, but we had a completely different outcome.
My wife had surgery that afternoon, and I could not leave her alone.
Again.
So I don't wanna hear that again from you, please.
Listen, it is what it is, you don't have to get nasty, I'm not attacking you, I'm telling you that we had a discussion and we came to an agreement at the workshop of how we were gonna move forward, period. That was, we walked out of there with, this is what we are doing, and it will be on the next agenda, because it's gonna be an approved item. Now for you to come back and have an entirely different appeal, then you could've submitted your thoughts and comments to the city manager prior to that workshop, there was other ways to do it. 'Cause you knew about your wife's surgery well before that day. So I, I'm not, not discrediting what you've experienced, but there was other ways, and this is not how we conduct business, thank you.
This is how we conduct business.
Well, uh, for attorney's transparency, I will tell you, um, yes, I was not at that workshop, but I made it clear that night that I could not attend, 'cause I had a prior engagement. Um, my feelings on that night, uh, we had that meeting, and I agreed with the mayor, that we did need to demolish it, we were gonna put too much more money into trying to restore this hundred-and-two-year-old building, and like Mayor Yeager said, you know, we had this approved, what, twenty-some-odd years ago, and we let it sit there and we didn't do anything. And like Councilwoman Saunders, or Councilwoman Saunders said, that we're gonna have to rebuild this whole thing. And it's not gonna be a hundred-and-two-year-old building, this is just my opinion, but if we rebuild it, it's gonna be a new building. And I, I really do, I think we're gonna waste money in, in getting a civil engineer, I'm not an engineer, but I don't, isn't a structural engineer, but I think we're gonna pay him to come out and say it's not fixable, that's just my opinion.
Jennifer Morris, ten sixty-four, Golden Don Loop. So, couple things. In reality, if we tear down this building, the, the, the main issue that the mayor has and everyone has is you don't want construction when, with the new library. The reality is, nothing else is gonna go up there, it's going to be a grass pad for the rest of everyone's lives on this council. And that's unfortunate, but that's the way you guys do business, and that's how projects are done around here. There's a lot of, oh flashy, we're gonna do this, and we're gonna do this, and then five years later, or two years later, we're gonna have sewer, we're gonna have a splash pad, we're gonna have a new library, we're gonna have this, and nothing ever happens. And so what we're trying to do is utilize a space that is functional, we actually walked through that. It is not dilapidated like you guys say it is, it's not, um, unfixable. And I think that that would be a great symbol for the city of Mineola to actually fix something that was a mistake of theirs, that they, they neglected, and like, certain other projects, and actually do the right thing, and at least, I don't think it's even gonna cost anywhere near ten thousand dollars for a civil engineer to look at a fourteen-hundred-square-foot building and say, yeah, the foundation is good. But let's at least try, so we can get something done that, that makes sense for the residents, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dave Yeager, twenty-seven fifty, Purple River Court. I acquired this building when I was on council or mayor, I'm not sure which, but, um, the fact is, we had twenty-two years to do something, and we did nothing. And the, it's, you know, ten thousand dollars, that's a lot of money to say it's no good and it's a hundred years old. The fact is that we're building a brand-new library that's taken forever next to it, and then we have this building. And again, an old building takes a lot of maintenance, and it'll be a gift of giving, it's just like the generator down there, it needs to be thrown away, and you need to finish that project and be done, whatever it turned out to be. But if you tear down the building, you need to decide what you're gonna do with the project and let's get it done, thank you.
Thank you very much, anyone else?
Cheryl Pavlak, eighteen oh eight Carey Street. I was unable to attend the workshop, um, so I don't know what went on, but I'm confused by a statement that one of the young ladies mentioned, and that was that at the workshop, someone said that it would not cost an arm and a leg to refurbish the building, but yet, everything that I've heard and understood, and what I've seen with my own eyes just driving by it, it would be like, I'm on life support, and you're gonna give me a new heart, and then I'm gonna die two weeks later. So I believe in preserving history, but what, uh, Mr. Councilman Saunders said about this building being neglected for so long, if you don't maintain your home, you know, just watch any HGTV, you see termite damage, you see this damage, that damage, there mold in, in there, and, uh, what was a sixty-thousand-dollar budget turns into a million-dollar budget in many cases. So, I agree with Councilwoman, uh, Flynn, when she said that it's a waste of ten thousand dollars. I'd rather see that money put towards trailer park improvements and the bathrooms for the handicap. So, yes, we wanna save old things, but many of us that live in newer subdivisions, we didn't choose to live in, in an older area. And I think if, of anyone that's been here for many, many years, I can understand what Councilman Saunders is saying. So my vote would be, uh, if I would've attended the workshop, would be to just, let's just level that building. That's what I said the last time when it was on the agenda before the workshop, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think at this point in time, you come on, Candy. I think at this point in time, I would like to, can we make it either or for next one?
A line item?
A line item for, put 'em on, so we have a full council.
Certainly.
And just to better, to understand, I know Council, Vice Mayor Service had a conflict last time, with her vote to, 'cause this is the way I look at it, if she, if she votes for, if she voted against the engineering is gonna force a vote for the demolishing, so I'm concerned that it's kind of.
I agree.
The first one, you have a conflict, on the first one, because it creates a conflict for the second one.
Right.
Is that how you would interpret that, Scott?
And, and I think the gentleman that was here the last time, at the last meeting, he made a very good point.
Just, yeah, that's fine.
Let's just cut that. No conflict, I withdraw, no problem, because there's no reason, you know, whatever you decide, but I withdraw, I have no problem. I would do it for nothing. I could care less. It's just trying to help the city, but there's no conflict, I withdraw, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that would problem solved.
Well, if you did it for nothing, there'd be no conflict either, so. Yes, we can bring it back at the next meeting, and you can have, A, bring back the structural engineer proposal, B, potential demolition, or frankly, C, any other suggestions that you wish to do with regards to that.
Just bring it back as an, and A, as a structural.
Think it'll be helpful to have a full council.
Let's just go, A, structural, B, if structural doesn't pass, then demolish it. Okay?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay, Candy Alexander, eight seventeen, Meadow Park Drive. Okay, so I wasn't at that meeting either, but, um, I, I did, in one of my meetings with the city, suggest that if you do demolish the area for, uh, improvements going forward, that if you could put in the, um, pavilion, and in that pavilion, I had described like a little corner that could be like a mini stage, so that it could really be impactful and useful to different organizations that would come, some seating maybe, um, and really give it purpose. Um, so I hope that would be considered when you think about the project afterwards. I've been here for sixteen years, um, if I let my house go for sixteen years, you guys would've been, so whatever happened before, we're just deal, now dealing with it now. Sixteen years for me went by just like that, so I would imagine what you're talking about, it goes by quickly. Um, but when things are, need to move on, they need to move on, so I would encourage you, get it squared, think about what you're going to do, I gave my suggestions, again, I couldn't meet, um, the meeting, and, uh, I hope that you can go from there. And I hope your wife has recovered, thank you.
Thank you, Candy.
Thank you, Candy.
Okay, can I get a motion to table? Item eight, to the next meeting, please. So moved.
Second.
First and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now I'm kind of, I had asked Mark to put the possible, um, RFPs, RFQs, after I got schooled, but what an RFQ and RFP is, it could go either way on these. But to Jennifer Morris's point is, we do have a couple of projects that just need to start going. Some of them, people are going to donate their time and do them for free, and some of them aren't, some of them are pretty easy on a slam dunk. The, the one here, and I don't mean it's still your thunder on this, but on the May Griffith Park, we have Memorial Day coming up. I would like to see, at the Memorial Day, Pam discussed last year about doing something, have something, so, um, I would like to get an RFQ or RFP, whatever the proper terminology is, um, for that, I think it's just some type of stone monument or something like that, and get that designed underway, um, and, you know, working with that. Separate from that is, we talked about, we own the property across the street, is go ahead and put, just putting a dock out there, as a reflection dock, and getting RFQ for a dock, or RFK, whatever that terminology is. But, um, go ahead, can we go ahead and just put a, a dock with a, the maximum, you know, if you're looking for something like, the farthest it can go out with, I think there's the, if you go down Lake Shore Drive, um, there's the pavilion that's off the subdivision that's in the city, and what is, my mind escapes me, down by the doctor's house.
Oh, the Waterford, uh, Waterford Landing?
Something like that, with an octagon piece at the end. I would really like to put the doctor's, you know, bar out there with TV, but we can't do that. So we'll stay with just the octagon piece, as far out as you could go, kind of replicate that, can we get RFQ, what that would cost?
And I actually did reach out to, and I'm sorry, Mark, nope, nope, Mark, you go ahead and do it.
I'm just trying to get the ball rolling here.
She has been working on that, uh, I would suggest first that we have it designed. And we all agree on what that design would be, and have it designed and engineered, then you can go out.
And that, and I'm not, that's fine, I just wanna make sure that we're not holding it up, that somebody can do that.
On both of the projects, on the dock and also, uh, the memorial, I reached out to Mark and told him, and he specifically told me the routes that we needed to take before.
And I just didn't know if there was anything that, I was just trying to practically get stuff approved to get it moving, so you don't wait another two weeks, if you're on it, then I apologize.
No, 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 don't apologize, I'm, I'm all over it.
Okay, good.
I have a question. Um, and this question is for Scott, um, on that dock, if we do that dock, what are the protections that we're gonna have as a city for liability? In other words, kids go out there, they fall off, you know where I'm going with this. Is it gonna be a liability to the city if we do that? And/or if we have a design engineer, do we, you know, we put the railings up, you know, lights, you know where I'm going with this, so.
Well, I think anytime you do something, there's liability of some sort, that's, but sometimes you overlook that and say it's for the greater good to do it, and I think that's what you're probably talking about with something like this. Yes, absolutely, as far, part of the design will be to make sure that every possible way to reduce that liability is signage, railing, you know, you name it, will be, will be built into that, but, but it is certainly possible for the city to have a, a public dock, and, and if, if the council's willing, we can move forward on that, so.
Oh, no, I'm all for it, I just wanna take those precautions. Oh, no, I'm all for it. I just want to take those precautions.
I don't think we should call it a dock unless you intend to have boats tied up to it.
What is it? It's a water pier?
Pavilion.
Pavilion, but it goes out to the water, so it'd be a pier?
Yeah, but I, I agree with Joe and kind of going off your, you're going to put railings up, railings need to be on both sides all the way.
Oh, for sure. Oh, for sure.
Somebody doesn't run into it, but yes.
Yep. Actually, there was a third one I had spoken to you about as well, was the splash pad as well.
That's fine. That's fine. Whatever you need. I'm just, I'm just here, if you don't need anything, then it's a meat point.
I got with Mark and.
So as long, as soon as you can do that, so if you can, I was just like, okay, I do.
Well, it's not like I can talk to you about it.
To like, okay, somebody's going to do this, but they want something to.
Yeah.
You know, like attorneys, they all want to get paid. They don't do it for free. Well, David does it for free, besides David. Thank you. Okay. Did you want to? So part, go ahead. If you, go ahead, it's an outline item.
Jennifer Morris, ten sixty-four Golden Don Loop. I have two questions. What is the vision of a dock and where would people park?
And I think it's not a dock, I think it's a pier, correct?
Okay, pier dock.
Terminology, only because it's not going to be something that people can bring their boats and hook up to it.
So what is the vision of the pier and where are people going to park?
It's an accessory off of the trail, just like the May Griffith Pavilion was years ago. It's just on the other side of the street, goes out there as people can rest and relax as they're taking a journey through Minneola on the trail.
So no parking access?
Well, there is. When there's Memorial, there was parking access.
Parking on the grass, but there's no parking per se. There's not a parking lot.
Right.
But if somebody decides to park on the side of the road, like they can anywhere else, then that's their right. But we're not providing a parking lot for it. No, it's just another amenity on the trail.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay. Project updates. You wanted to sit the highlights, Mark?
Hit the highlights, okay. The library, the insu, the installation is done. The sheet rock has been delivered. And I believe they're already putting the drywall up now. The fire station, the bay doors, we decided to move with, I did talk to the, the manager of the factory and they could not guarantee me a delivery date now. So we decided to switch companies and we're, we were, may, placed an order with another company to have them done.
We buy American, please. Are we buying American?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, we, they, they thought this one was American too. So anyway. Let's see. The fire station, it's under design for the second fire station. Right now, we're trying to work with the adjacent property owner to provide parking at Teardrop Lake. And also they're, they're making some adjustments to their design where the apartments are going to go. And so that may impact the access of this parcel to that lake. So we're going to meet with the adjacent property owner soon to, to work out those plans, those details. Oak Valley Speed Tables, we have eight to nine locations identified for the speed humps. And some speed humps and signage have been ordered. As soon as they're in, we'll have them installed within a couple of weeks, once they're, once they arrive. The wastewater treatment plant, the surveyors have completed the initial survey. And right now, they're undergoing value engineering, but they're moving forward with that design. The tower truck's been delivered. The GFL contract, I've talked to several of the administration with the company in Florida. And they're expected to have a mitigation plan presented to council at the next meeting. Citrus Grove Road is still in process and plans are being reviewed by the state. Sidewalks, we've done about forty cubic yards so far. And they're also getting quotes just to have a company come in and do all of them. So they're working on that now.
So you're just thinking, I saw they're not doing it now. So you're, they're just going to try to do it all at one?
I'm going to try to get them all done.
Okay.
And we'll probably shift the money we had to repay Oak Valley. I were just doing the sidewalks.
Okay.
That's it.
We talked last time about can we put on the project list, parking at the MAC? People, if we're addressing Trailhead Park, then I think this is visibility that it's actually on our radar what the solution is. So we have that. Another project we discussed in the past, it's not really, doesn't warrant the list, but just to make sure. With the time changes, having somebody go through and audit the lights to see which ones are on and which ones are off and which ones are sitting at a ninety degree angle. We have one in our neighborhood that shines into somebody's house. It's flipped. But just to get, just with the season coming in, the light. So that's, that's it. If you don't mind, thank you.
Also with the trees, the company that was here harvesting trees for another project, in the past, we tried to have them come in, but our job was too small for them to come in and do. They gave us a pretty thorough review of, of our sites and what they would do. We told them to go ahead and get started and we haven't heard from them since. We even asked the property owner that has them on their property to, to help us reach them and we haven't been able to reach them, so.
Guess we'll figure out what we're going to do with the MAC and go with Plan B. Okay. So we had talked in the past about, and it was part of the clearing out, I know you've done some work with the fire station now here, cars parking, the two things I would like, I would request is one, let's try to move forward and get at least the front part of this cleaned up after the landscape dude is done. So we can have some type of parking. And since I've got some comments, compliments, that City Hall's looking better now that it's cleaned up and things are getting open, overseeing the thing, can we come up with a policy that city cars park in the back?
Sure.
They don't need to have the signs on them, but just. And it doesn't, I mean, not all the employees have to park there, but just some shift. It's just when you drive by and you see any, one, instead of any cars, can we just go with city logo cars and trucks? Does that make, does that make sense? That means you don't have, then it doesn't look like a fleet lot if you have kind of the switch. So especially, especially, it's more so at night. I mean, if they're coming in during the day, park there, but at night when people drive by and there's nobody here and they just see all the cars there, it just. I'm just, that's just a personal opinion. That Clement, Clement's got a car lot. They got a car pool.
Yeah, they've been, I think they normally do it for security. There's more eyes going up down the road, but we have cameras and stuff.
Well, security wouldn't be an issue if we fixed the lights here. Is there a way to upgrade these lights to LEDs? We have some dead lights. There's some dead zones here.
Certainly is. But we, we have cameras also now.
Because it, after hearing Scott's story tonight, City Hall seems to be this place where people come to purchase things from Craigslist and Facebook Marketplace. This seems to be the general location where people meet up. And lighting would be nice just to make it safer. You're not the first person to do it. I know people that do it too.
Yeah. And you know why that they do it?
Because it's safe and the police are here.
That's right. There's cameras and the substation is there.
But I just think if it's nice, let's, it look good, and we'll use dark sky, but kind of redo the lighting, please. Okay. So that was more of the city manager. Any final public comment? Anybody have anything to say?
Nicole Marie, eight seven nine High Point Circle. I didn't mean any disrespect. I know that you got triggered, Councilman Saunders, and I wanted to apologize for that because that wasn't my intention. However, this should have never been a line item because we discussed it. And at the, at the workshop, I remember Mark specifically asking if it was something that he could just go through because we already agreed. And first, Mayor Kelly, you said yes, and then it was you who changed your mind and said last minute, well, it'll be not a big deal, so just put it on as a line item. So I want to say that this is a lot of the problems because these are things that we have already discussed. We came to conclusions, we figured out what direction we were going to go. And then an unnecessary action to bring it here when we already had an okay, just causes chaos amongst everybody. Now, I understand if you cannot attend a workshop to the council members and to every person in the audience who came up and said that they couldn't attend. But some of us did. We made accommodations for our child as a single mother to come out to the workshop, to be in full attendance, to have an incomplete agreeance before we walked out, to have a plan of action of what we were going to do, to have met with my own personal time with the builders, with the city manager, to discuss different options, why we were doing it this way, invested my time, my resources and my money, because as a nonprofit, I, this is what we do. For it to come up and end like this was a little bit disheartening, to say the least. I feel like moving forward, if we have a workshop that someone cannot attend, whether it is a council member or it is a resident of this community and you have thoughts, then you can send those thoughts in an email to the city manager or to the clerk. And at least they will be spoken on your behalf. But there was absolutely no preparation on your behalf. And for us to come now here, to be pushed back and go backwards, seems absolutely redundant. So I would like each and every one of you to reflect on the process of how we move forward cohesively. Because we came in with a plan of action, we came to an agreement of things. And now for all of that to be derailed, that's absolutely unacceptable. So I hope that each and every one of you can reflect on that. Because now we are right back where we started, where we were first actually making progress and we were working together as a community. This is not something that I'd like to see. So I apologize if I triggered or offended anyone. However, I feel like it is your responsibility to make sure that your voice is heard, whether or not you can be in attendance. Because this should have never been here to begin with. Thank you.
And just for clarification, I know we, I'm not sure theater did. I think historically here, Mark, and I support it, will bring a lot of stuff from the council if it's controversial or something. And but just, just to make sure that he covers himself, that he gets buy-in from the council. Because we have had issues in the past where council has decided on doing things and during comments and stuff like that, and it has caused city problems. So I think it's more of error on the side of safety, is that a good word to put it, that we, we did it. So I apologize about that. So it was this.
Dave Yeager, twenty seven fifty Purple Meadow Court. Mr. Saunders, obviously, you've been here seventeen years and you missed a meeting. Oh, well. And your family comes first. And it's happened to many other council men and women, mayors, not mayors, city managers. When he had some, his mom passed away, you know, things happen. The other thing is, we need to work on the proclamation for Mary Jane for the library. And we also need to do a proclamation for Frankie for the public works. When I got here in ninety-four, there was five people working. And Mary Jane and Frankie, Mary Jane would handle the water and the billing. And then I think we had one other lady there, that was Maridelle, I think. It's such a long time ago. And Frankie, you know, if there was a water leak, Frankie was out three o'clock in the morning, a hole, digging a hole out. But I think the proclamation, we need to get that going now, if you would, please. So when the library is done, because Mary Jane, that was her, her, her pet, and that's where the City Hall used to be. And she was here and there's no one better than this earth that deserves it than her and Frankie. The other thing is, we're going to, on that piece of junk mail that I got rid of, in that junk mail, it did say conservation soil. It would be really nice that, it looks like a war zone I hear, we could bring a few dump trucks of conservation soil before we put the sod down. So we can be the model for what we're trying to achieve. Thank you.
They, they did mix soil into the sand. They, they brought in a couple of truckloads of soil.
Nathan Foe, seven oh seven Blue Citrus. I've got a few things. The first one, I wanted to thank Mark and Lieutenant Reed. We had an event yesterday in our neighborhood and the city was fantastic for response. The deputies were very good at accommodating the neighbors. Provided information, but not unnecessary information. So I just wanted to thank you guys for taking care of the citizens when negative things happen. It was very well handled, I believe. The next one is the ride share. Didn't we get approval from the state to remove items that aren't supposed to be there when they hang out too long? We're having trouble with truck parking and that. There's an RV that I think has been there at least three days parked in the corner. And so I don't know if we can do something, or at least check and see if there's someone, you know, squatting in it right now, or did they, it's a pretty old one, so it might be they donated it to us.
Which RV are you talking about?
The ride share right down here.
No.
Park and ride.
Oh, the park and ride.
Yeah, there's.
But Ms. Flynn, Ms. Flynn does have a good point. There's one that's on Old Highway Fifty somewhere too.
But that one that's on Old Highway Fifty in the church parking lot?
Yeah.
That's, there is somebody in there.
Yeah. So.
That, there, there's a Coke case.
That case was out. Ramon was here a while back. Has it been reopened?
The three day one, the one that's at the?
The one on Old Fifty.
No, the one on Old Fifty.
Oh, the one on Fifty that's been there.
By the church.
So I just thought I'd mention, it might be someone's just traveling through, it moved once, but now it's all the way in the back corner backed in, so it might be donated.
Okay.
Crooked Can. I've heard that the official groundbreaking is four fifteen at four o'clock.
Yeah, we're going to have to discuss that at council. That'll all settle in my thunder. Dave, on yours, yours on ours.
You should check with us in advance then.
I know. Thanks.
So then I'll let you finish the rest of that, then I'll skip it.
No, you go, go ahead and tell them, it's at four fifteen, there's a council member at six, you probably shouldn't, you probably shouldn't test samples. Not that anybody up here is going to take free samples at a Crooked Can.
I am hoping you guys sample heavily and it will be the most entertaining council meeting ever.
Absolutely.
I'll be working, so I have to see if I can get some time off on that day.
I'm going to make a point of topping off everybody's drinks while you're there at that groundbreaking, just to cause chaos. Last one I've got, I got a text, so apparently Mr. Hernandez on his vacation is watching. And he says that he has been talking to the county and that they are looking at helping with the trees at the MAC. Because they want to fix parking also.
Cool.
So I am just passing that on his behalf.
At our workshop.
I'm sorry?
Hopefully they'll give us an update at his workshop.
I hope so. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you Nathan.
Okay. Mark?
The original City Hall sign order has been canceled and we've, okay.
Sorry.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Jennifer Morris, ten sixty-four Golden Don Loop. But not for much longer. My husband, I just want to let everyone know. My husband has accepted a new job and we're going to be going to Washington State. So our house is officially up for sale. And it probably will be sold very quickly.
Now?
Hmm?
In how long?
It'll probably be sold very quickly, her house. Yeah.
April Fool's, just kidding.
That was a good one though.
That was good.
Give you credit.
Good job. Good job.
All right, Mark.
You can't top that, Mark.
I can't. The City Hall sign, the company that we had originally hired had difficulties getting that order fulfilled. So we, we've since canceled that order, got a refund on our, on our deposit, and we have hired a new company to, to get that signed up.
To order it from the same company that the first company was ordering it from?
It's possible. It's possible. It's possible. It's possible. Um. The railings were installed, um, over the weekend, I believe they came in.
Yes. Nice job on that. Nice match.
Um, new water fountains were installed in the mayor, main hallway here. They were hit there. I saw them doing that yesterday or today. We already talked about the drain issues here and, um, you know, that we may have to close the bathrooms down for up to a month, but they're, they're working on that. Um, summer camp is almost at capacity. Five weeks are already totally full.
What was the attendance from Menial versus non-Menial?
I don't have that answer, but I can get it for you.
It's not important. You can just save it for the next meeting. I'm not gonna sit up tonight waiting for you to send me any mail. We'll catch it next meeting.
I think they just opened it up for non-Menial.
Of the non-Menial?
Yeah. Yeah. So the, the, in the beginning, it was Menial and then they had like a cutoff date of, of what date? I think the twenties, Friday. Okay. Yeah. So Friday, let's just say the twenty-eighth, that, that was the cutoff date for Menial residents that were, uh, given, you know, first choice, first priority. And then after that, that's when they opened it up.
And thank you for, when that first came out, that wasn't there, we kinda had a discussion. So thank you for amending that. I think it worked out good for the Menial. That way we don't have.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, the, uh, the Week Ten field trip, the Southern Hill Farm, they, they canceled that, so we're gonna work on a different field trip. Uh, but, uh, all the others are still on schedule. Uh, the next Menial market is April twenty-third. Um, we continue planning for the Centennial. And the Memorial Day event is Monday, the twenty-sixth at ten AM at the Maygriff with gazebo area. Um, I notified you guys about a church that wants to move into the old car lot. Just, just wanna make sure that's okay. Um, for now, they may have to come through a different request, but. Um, agenda software is expected to go live in May and so y'all will have different links sent to you when that software goes live, um, compared to what we're doing now. The state, the state's looking at ending, along with property taxes, which is why it's important that we're financially secure cause you know, you just never know the things that come up. Um, and we need to be prepared for those. But they're also looking at ending CRAs. And so the Florida League of Cities has requested, um, everyone to submit letters to the legislature about, um, support of keeping the CRAs and talk about the projects we've done. We've, we've handled ours very responsibly. We've done some great projects and we have a lot of great projects in queue. Um, just wanna make sure if it's okay that we send that letter. Um, if you wanna think about it before we do, let us know, but.
No, I'm fine with, I'm fine with, I'm fine with sending it.
Joe? You might wanna be sure to mention the interchange on the turnpike.
Yes, sir. That's a good one.
So if that happened, if they were to purge the CRA, does that release our liability of the money to it?
The proposed bill allows existing projects like the turnpike to.
So essentially, cause the bill I read, and then I'm hearing different scuttles, the bill I'm hearing is we're status quo through the end of our CRA, we just can't extend it or add anything else to it or take.
Well, there's some language about no new projects, which there's not a lot of guidance as to what that means. Does that mean we can't do any, start anything new, even though our CRA is in existence?
We can't fix Trailhead Park, is what you're saying.
Oh, no.
Okay.
We'll, we're monitoring that.
How is, what's the temperature for it? I saw it went to one, it's gone to another board this week.
Yeah, I don't.
But it hadn't, but it didn't make it to the House yet, but that was in the Senate?
Right.
Okay.
We've, we've done a lot of great work with it and we have so many great projects in queue. And, you know, I don't know what we're gonna do if we don't have those CRAs in place. It's, it's really gonna.
Okay.
Challenge for us. Um, we'd also like to ask that, that the owner of the Vista Hills project has asked to extend their approval until, um, March fifth, twenty twenty-nine. Is that okay if we do that?
Twenty twenty-nine?
Yeah, correct. They need additional time. They're working on other projects within the city and so they need a little additional time to, um, that one's not the top priority that they're working on now, so they just need a little addition, additional more time to work on.
Twenty twenty-nine? Trying to process four years.
What is Vista Hills?
That's the, uh, second set of, uh, apartments over by the high school.
That's fine. If that's what they need.
That's what it is.
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, yeah.
Have a consensus to extend.
They, they have other large projects going on in the city.
Yes.
That's fine. I don't have a problem with it.
Even they have to delay stuff to make room for other stuff. They can't do it all at one time.
That's fine.
Um, also probably in the next meeting or two, we're gonna bring, uh, our impact fee study for water and wastewater is completed. And we're gonna be bringing that forward to y'all very soon. Um, one of the audience members mentioned, uh, tiered rates. We're also working on a rate study. Um, we have tiered rates now, but those may need to be modified to help reduce water consumption if it's, if it's the will of the, of the body. But, but for now, we got the impact fees for water and wastewater that we're gonna bring forward.
Yes.
And, um, we're in the process of doing one, uh, re- review, reviewing the one for the fire department, parks and police. We have a different company working on that. That's just in the initial stages, so. That's all.
Anything for senior?
No, thank you for taking my calls and, and hearing me out.
No, nothing, Mark. Thank you.
Nope.
Nothing. Thanks. Thanks, Mark, for everything. Scott?
Nothing this evening?
No, everything's in monitoring. We're just in monitoring stages now for everything in Tallahassee?
Yes. Holding our breath.
Okay. Anything for senior?
No, thank you.
No, thank you.
Um, I do have one. Um, this project out here, this landscaping thing is annoying to me. It was supposed to be done two weeks ago. We had a signed contract. He's still doing it through. I know we have no loss, but it's, can you talk to him? Somebody needs to talk to him. I mean, he's.
He's like who?
Oh, me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a point here where he, we signed up in October. He came out in November, then he ditched us. And then we had a conversation four weeks ago. He's like, I can get it done in a week. I'll have this, this and this. Of course, it's not written down, so there's nothing. And then he disappeared because he needed an extra week cause we cut down a tree or three trees or whatever. And now I'm not sure what's going on. I'm just confused.
Um. We, we can address that with him.
If he needs to sub it out to somebody else, then he, then he needs to do something. It needs to get done. I mean, he's already done damage to the building that I'm hearing of, so I do expect him to pay for all the repairs to the building that he's damaged. It's not a, you know, if a resident takes out a water line, then the resident has to pay to get it fixed. I think he has to pay for that, so it's not a, it's not a be-nice time. And air conditioners also, and any other thing that I don't know about. And TBD. So, okay, thank you. Pam?
Nothing.
Um, just for transparency for the audience and the residents, the April seventh P and Z meeting has been canceled.
Joe, Ethan? Um, the two things I had was the naming of the buildings. Thank you. Um, we do have a tentative Crooked Can on the fifteenth. So please plan accordingly. Okay, sorry. Um, four, that means we gotta be out at six and.
What happened?
Yeah. So if we have to Uber, we can Uber.
Oh, yeah. Gotcha.
Okay. Um, and that's it. Um, can I get a motion for adjournment, please?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Can I get a second?
A second.
All in favor of saying aye?
Aye. Mark? I need to get with Mark.
Okay? You know what? Just make sure you're okay. I'm alive. Yeah, it's most of the bell.
Mr. Mark Johnson, I have a quick question to ask you before you go walk into the audience.
Okay.
Hold on.